We all set to start with the place, please? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll call the members, please.
Trustee Trombley. Yeah, Trustee McFetrich, here. Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Garrett, here.
Mayor Martin.
Here. Motion to approve the last minutes of the previous meeting, August 12th, 2013.
Salute.
Got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any dissent? Motion carries. Presentation of petitions, communications, notices, general question period for members of the community.
Mr. Allen.
Kevin, please identify yourself, just for the record.
I'm Anthony Pichet.
I'm Justin Trombley.
We're the president and vice president of NCCS Student Council. And we'd like to try to get greater collaboration with the village and the school to help in projects that would benefit the community and the environmental concerns, getting the local youth more involved in the government, in the local government. So we'd like to try to get up. We're looking to increase civic involvement between the community and the students. And we're considering a few projects which would link those two things together, one of which being the new playground that I'm always been built. And we were looking to gather volunteers from the school, from either the city council or, say, the key club or any other organization of that sort, in which we could help in any manner of ways to help that project out. As well as things like cleaning the lathe or doing any other kind of roadside cleanup or maintenance service of that nature. So, that's kind of our broad bid.
Well, we certainly welcome the, uh...
Yeah. I think we could find something.
Oh, yes. Our last, uh...
Open arms.
Our last collaboration with the student body worked out very well, with the community there. Student Command suggested it. We stepped up, the community stepped up, the students stepped up, and it worked out well. We're in our third year. And it's, uh, I think it benefits everyone. We welcome whatever projects you'd like to do. Can we make you, madame, go between with this?
Yeah.
Let Trustee McFetrich know, whatever you, you know, whatever you come up with, and ensure we can work something out. We welcome whatever help you're offering, your insight. I think it's a good collaboration. I think it's a good thing for the community and the school to work together on this. And we certainly welcome all of the input and all of the activities that you wish to provide. So, I thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? Any, is there anything else you want to mention? Do you want to mention, like to mention? Well... You know, madame?
It's not a few times.
Not a few times, yeah. Okay, that's, that's good. That's good. Few times, okay. All right. Anyone else supposed to address the board? Sir?
Uh, Kevin Triller, Village of Champlain. I'm just going through the minutes that were handed to me now. They're not on the web. During your last meeting, you made a presentation looking for over a million dollars to put water pipes up on Prospect Street.
That project involves an eight-inch pipe connecting to the 12-inch, putting a pump station, a lift station in there. The cost, as I've found in our past studies, the cost is about $500,000.
So half of what you spoke of last meeting?
Uh, I'm not sure if I mentioned a figure. Did I mention a figure here?
I think it was a million-two last meeting, but I don't see it in the minutes.
Oh. I'd have to find it though. It's about $500,000, Kevin. When I looked at the engineering reports, with the new, uh, with the new eight-inch pipe going into the 14 or 15 homes there, connecting that and the lift station up at the top of the hill.
So this is a grant, or is this...
No, this is part of the water project. If the water project with the new water tower does not go through, or, you know...
The one that Mike's been working on?
Right. Well, it's, it's there. I think the grant money's coming in. Before, it was kind of a supposition. Now, with the $2 million, I think, is going to be awarded to that grant for that project.
So we would have grant money to do it?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm Ken Delafarge.
Hi, Ken.
All of you know that. I'm here because all of you are interested in what's going on at 29 Cedar Street, as am I. I'd like to take about four or five minutes of your time to say what's going on down there and what happened before. Most of us are aware that the region in terms of employment has been unstable at times, especially people that work at Wyatt's, such as myself. And so I went away to retool myself professionally with skills, or education really, not skills. And that, that's completed. I did that so I could come back. And fundamentally, what drives any project is that we have income that's for every individual here, through the municipality, and for myself. And so during this year, 2013, I spent my time mainly focused on preparing for professional tests. And on August 17th, hopefully those have ended for me. And since then, I've spent a considerable amount of time at the property on Cedar Street and principally just removing personal property from it. One thing that I can say for certain is the fire department did a very good job of putting the fire out, as I've said to the chief. It would have been great if they were there five minutes before it started, or an hour after, you know, it finished, because then there'd be nothing to do in terms of cleaning things up. As of now, the building has disconnected the water. NICEG has removed a meter from the place. And I've spent, I don't know, about three hours on the phone today trying to find someone, because I still have flags up in the yard. And I assume that that means that there's still gas running underneath the ground. And my concern was, if there's any excavation going on, that, um... I'd want the pipes moved all the way back into the, into the road. And I understood that that could be done. There was some correspondence that came from our code enforcement officer, and it left the question for me, what's the authority to proceed with doing samples? And anyway, I called the village and the town about a week, last week. And anyway, I got up, I got up today to understand that we've been on vacation. So we have that matter, as far as I know, resolved and understood. But I think one very important thing that's been discovered in going through the home is how little damage, I think, has happened to the inside of the house. And that could be because of, like, the bookshelves and things like that that were in its way in the fire's path. And so I'm having a, an engineer, not an engineer, an architect, come by next week on the 17th. That was faxed to you guys late in the day, I bet it run free, dirty, or something like that. And to give an assessment of what it would cost to get some stamp plans, because I think that what's there is very much worth reclaiming. And so that's, that's what I can say.
So what are you looking to do here, Ken?
I would say to rebuild the property.
I mean, all of the correspondence that we have received from you and from the codes enforcement officer repeatedly, you know, the demolition, the timeline, you know, we have a timeline from you, you know, to demolish this, this building because of its unsafe structure. You know, working with the codes enforcement officer here, we've, you know, with the demolition permit and looking for asbestos. I mean, that's, that's just, that's, that's the thing, that's the way that we, or the way that it's worked. I mean, when we had issued out on Church Street with the old meat locker, before we could do anything with that building, we had to have an asbestos abatement, inspection done before we could demolish that building. And I think it, you know, I think it, from the standpoint of the village and doing things correctly, I think that is the way that it's, it should go. The timeline, I have to tell you, Ken, from, from my standpoint, I think the board has, the board has gone a long way in terms of allowing the extra time for this to be addressed. I mean, we're talking 2009, and this, you know, this, this, this project has to move forward. I don't know if the village board is, at this point in time, willing to extend whatever time is, is being looked at or looked for here. You know, the, the removal of that property, I mean, it's not just, it's not just, it's, it's not just a health issue or a concern for the village, but it's also a concern for the neighbors in the neighborhood. You know, where this has stood there for now four years. And we, I think we, as the village board, went out of our way here to accommodate, as you were overseas, you know, doing your education thing, which, which is great, and I'm glad that you have been successful. But it, you know, it's, this is something that has to be moving forward. I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels about this. I'm pretty sure that I speak, or speak for the board, but you're more than welcome to kick in here.
No, I agree with you, Mayor. Ken, it's like, if you've been going forward to demolition and now you're changing your mind, reconsidering, does that mean that if you were able to rebuild it, it would happen to be Elliot's fault? Or is this going to be, like, put off for a certain period of time again? That's, that's the issue.
Well, that's a good question. I think part of what is at hand here is there's a change, a material change, in being able to actually remove stuff from the structure and see what's left. Or not what's left, but really what's present. And the thing is, is in order to move forward with the building permit or a demolition permit, which was rejected, the reality is, is I need to be able to ascertain with someone that can put a stamp on the plans to say, this is what should take place, in order to make things conform with the code. And everything is governed, just like municipal projects and every one of our home projects, by how much, how many funds do we have? I mean, the, the building that was demolished on Church Street, the guy said he has no money, and the village wound up carrying the costs.
Who reversed the thing?
Okay. Well, it's still never as good as having an owner of the property. You look at the property, and do what they want, and redeem it with the village, as opposed to whatever other alternatives are there.
I think that the village, and mostly your neighbors, have been very, very patient over the last four years. And we are not doing a justice to the other village residents by leaving a burned-out structure that is potentially unsafe and attracting all kinds of women. We are not servicing the rest of the people of the village by allowing this to continue going on and going on and going on. I, I feel for you in that, you know, if this happened, you were not here to deal with it at the time. But I do think that the board, the board has been extremely lenient, if you will, in, in your plight of being overseas. But now that you are back, and now you're talking about, instead of demolishing, trying to rebuild, and now you're going to be looking at extending that, I'm sure, into next year, because we know that that is not going to happen, which will be upon us before we know it. We're into September, almost middle of September. I just, I just don't see the village extending any more time to you. It's, it's not just your piece of property on the street where you are by yourself. You have very close neighbors to that property. And we also have to consider them and what it's doing to their peace of mind in their area. I just, I myself don't see this going on much longer.
Ken, you mentioned that you're having an engineer come up and look at your property?
Look at that, yes.
What date was this?
Seventeenth.
The seventeenth. Is it possible that Mr. Tetro and the village's engineer can attend that as well? I mean, we've had it looked at. We had an engineer come up and look at the property. Never went inside. Gave his estimation of the exterior of the property and what it looked like. You were copied with that letter from that engineer. Is it possible that that could occur?
It's possible. I'd have to ask the engineer, or rather, the architect, what his viewpoints are in making an assessment of the building. And what would be the purpose of the engineer and anyone else going in?
To look at the property and determine whether it's, if this is a feasible structure issue, if this is something that the village is looking at. Right now, I don't think that the village board is, is willing to extend this time limit. I think we want some positive movement here on this building. And we have waited and waited and looked at the correspondence that goes back and forth. And it has, it has kind of come to a screeching halt here. And I think the board would like to see some action. I know the board would like to see some action.
May I ask a question regarding this? I know I've asked the board and spoken to the board before. There's numerous buildings in this village that are a disgrace. They're falling down. They need to be torn down. They still have utilities attached. They have no resale value. But it just seems that this particular property seems to be being targeted by this board.
I don't think it's being targeted. I think this is a four-year expression...
Well, what action has been taken against the other building owners? The one by, at the foot of the river, by Celine Paquette's building? One of them was torn down. The other one still stands.
Mm-hmm.
That building hasn't been used longer than his house.
That's because only one was condemned.
Well, why hasn't the other been condemned? Why haven't the two houses on both sides of the river?
Because it's not falling down at this point.
His house isn't falling down?
His house is wide open.
Mr. Mayor, can we just maybe get back to our issue at hand and start turning this into a discussion regarding every bad building in the village?
Certainly.
Well, that is the issue at hand. It just seems that this building is targeted. You've spent money. You've hired engineers. You haven't done that with these other buildings. His utilities have been disconnected. The other buildings have utilities connected. And so did the meat locker until it fall, fell down.
There was no utilities connected there.
They were. They pulled out of the building. They pulled out of Castine's house. They get, the electric lines were still. I filmed it. I stood there and filmed it.
There was no electric lines attached to that building. No, there was not. And the gas was not attached to that building. It was taken out of there. What came down from that was Castine's service.
When the building fell in that direction?
Yes. And that, there was no, there was no electrical attachment to that building.
But my, my question still stands. I mean, why hasn't a, a light effort been applied to these other derelict buildings within the village?
Because they're not in the same physical shape as this one. So we can move on. How does the board feel about this? What are you asking the board to do, first of all? Let us hear what you're asking to do.
I'm only here to inform the board as to the progress that I've made, what I've discovered relative to the inside of the building. It's open because that provides sunlight and allows me to see what's in there. So I have no power to do anything with the building at this point in time. There's been a, a denial of the, um... of the demolition. And in examining it and getting prepared for that, because I wouldn't want to demolish a home with all of the things that are in it, inside of it still, I see that the boards and the floors, I mean, they can jump on. There's, there's no problem. There's no difficulty with that. They're not springy. They're solid. And I think getting a, an engineer in there, or an architect, someone that can provide a stamp, can get this project moving in a way that I will find attractive, that the board would find attractive, and it'll comply with and satisfy the codes officer.
So you have this architect come through, and he says the house is viable to rebuild. Are you able to rebuild?
Yes.
Okay. So you would, could begin a project within the next month if you get the go-ahead on the 17th?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
That's distinctly different from the building that was torn down and taken away on Church Street. I mean, I'm here because I'd like to see that put back the way it was, to see it put back better. These projects don't happen in 15 days. They take time. They take planning. The three years that I was away, four years, whatever it was, I was not in a planning mode when I came back. I was focusing on, on getting past my licensing requirements. That's historical information for where, where it brings us today. I think it's reasonable that any person that's been around that went through a fire, they'd want to get their stuff out. And it's more complicated to get, to move a house, I would say, having moved a house when everything was intact and knew where it was, as opposed to having had the fire hoses move things across the house. So it's more difficult. And a lot of things have just been taken out of wholesale, and they'll have to be sorted later on, or else the property never will be open, you know, and swept, as several wounds already are.
Well, if you would be willing to have our engineer, as well as our codes enforcement, go through when your architect comes, I would be agreeable to bring this to next month's meeting as far as an extension to, for you to have a very, very thorough plan. You've been home for a year now. And, you know, when we have other residents coming to us concerned with the property, that's our concern, is a hole for the village, and that's what we have to focus on. And it is hard. I can't imagine going and losing a home. I, I can't even imagine that. But we, we have to be here for all the residents.
If I might, you have here a timeline in your correspondence of September 13th, having excavator and containers brought to the property. If you're, I assume you're postponing that. If the 17th is, the property will be evaluated by the architect?
Well, one, for the architect. The second, with the clarification that I've had from Mike, and not having had a demolition permit issued, I couldn't do anything.
Did you look into the asbestos sampling to get that done? In case of, you know, the dancers know that it would cost you 10 times more than building new? For example, if the architect says it's not feasible, so you can go forward with the, with the demolition permit? In other words, could, did you, did you schedule getting the, the sampling completed for the asbestos? So you could get the demolition permit if required?
That, that was not done. And the reason it was not done is, if you look at the letter, there's no authority cited in the code memo, because I didn't know how many, what, where, what code is applying. So I needed more facts in order to begin. A lot of numerous calls with the village clerks, and...
You haven't received that information yet?
Today. When Mike came back, he and I at least spoke.
Okay. So I guess what I'm asking is, I agree with Amy. If you could, if you could move forward with, you know, getting in line for that sampling, so there's a termination on the 17th, that there's no hope for the building, and it has to come down, you can go forward with, with that plan?
It's not required, though, if a person does the work themselves.
The, there's something with D E C about asbestos. You can't...
If you do the work yourself, and you don't hire your buddy, your neighbor, your brother, you don't have to have the asbestos survey done. But I don't see this project moving forward. Mr. Delafarge is going to do everything in there by himself. I mean, I personally don't think it's feasible. What the engineers and the architects are going to look at is what's called the 50% rule. If 50% of the value of the house is gone versus what's left, then basically it's a tear-down. My suggestion would be, if Mr. Delafarge wants to proceed along this line, is that he had, he would have to have the asbestos survey done anyway to renovate that house. Now, I'm assuming you're going to be hiring contractors to, to do the work in here?
No, no, I don't know.
You're going to build, you're going to rebuild it all by yourself?
That's correct.
It's up to your decision now.
The excavators, they're, they're rentable, and they have an analysis point. They have an expert.
But Ken, you have neighbors that are right up next year. Are you willing to take that risk financially, insurance-wise? Do you have insurance to cover if you take down their building? You saw what happened with a professional excavation company when they took down on Church Street, and it took out the neighbor's house.
Yeah, the damage.
I mean, you would have to have insurance to even do this. Do you have any skills to be able to do this? Do you have any training in this field?
I know how to operate a machine like that, but certainly, at the time that an excavator would be there, we'd have to be insured for taking care of that.
That makes me very nervous.
We need more positive proof than from that, that assurance. Either a professional demolition team or something of that nature, they can. Because half of that house has to be demolished. I think we all agree with that at this point. If you're going to renovate the front half, the back half has to be taken down.
I mean, depending on if there's any asbestos found, the type that's found, that may have to be abated by a professional asbestos abatement company, where this goes to dedicated landfills. It's, it's quite a process. You have to have, you have to be licensed by the state to touch this stuff.
The back two rooms are actually in substantially better shape than, than what one might think. The points that really show charm are actually just by the windows, but, and that's because the oxygen is coming in from that point. In looking in the room that the fire apparently started, the boards in there are still, they're still strong, they're still green when they're broken, and that's simply because there was an outer layer of, I forget what it's called, the material that some people put up in their homes, I don't like the material.
Inter, interior?
Paneling, paneling, and then for some reason, there is some kind of stuff in there that looks silvery, like, almost like it's Reynolds Wrap, and then there's the actual boards that are doing something, and it's those boards that are, that are in very good shape, it's just the facade here that has been exposed to the fire, and that's in the first two rooms.
Did your insurance company classify this as a total loss?
No.
They just classify it as a partial loss?
No. They declined responsibility, and I'd like to thank Allstate for that. And just so everyone knows, insurance companies have a two-year contract of limitation, not a six-year statute of limitation, to bring correction, or to challenge the policy and challenge our decisions.
So is this, this house has been open to the elements of, for four years, and you're saying there's no damage to it?
No, it's been boarded up for the last several years, I just recently opened up some of the windows and doors in order to have light in there, because there's more electricity in there.
Mr. Board, wish to consider?
Mike, would you consider being present for part of the evaluation?
Sure, no problem with that.
I, I'm willing to go that step, but we need to have a sound plan about that, no matter which direction this is going.
Make that in form of a motion, please.
Okay, make motion to, in regards to this extension, to wait until September seventeenth meeting with the architect, Mike will, codes enforcement officer will attend, and reconsider after that. Find out what the direction of this plan is.
Have a second?
Second.
Rule call, please, if there's no further discussion?
Trustee Trombley?
Nay.
Trustee McFedrich?
Aye.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Garrick?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
No. Anything else?
Can we ask that we're informed in writing immediately after the assessment?
I don't see why not, will they provide a letter?
Please.
Cue?
Just for clarification, am I alone going from the village, or is the village engineer also going to be attending?
I think her engineer should be as well.
Yeah, I agree.
Do you want to amend that?
Yeah, so I meant, I meant my motion to improve the, the village engineer with the inspection, please.
Second.
Need to reboot on this?
Trustee Trombley?
Nay.
Trustee McFedrich?
Aye.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Garrick?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
No. Report from the codes enforcement, please.
Well, most of my report had to do with Mr. Delafarge, the project here, and I sent out a few letters. Had a concern from one resident concerning junk vehicles, and after I researched the village code, village does allow one junk vehicle in the yard, demolished, half apart, you, you name it. So I couldn't do anything with one particular vehicle, but the other one, they've removed them since then. But at some point in time, if you ever do, sort of zoning revisions, you may want to look into the junk law as far as, I mean, a vehicle that all is left is the hood, no tires, and no, no glass, and I don't see a point in having them properly. So anyway, that was that, and I checked on the fire pong issue I had, and that seems to have been repaired, it's been filled up again, so look for care of that. Other than that, no indication for a week, likely good.
I see both those vehicles have been removed.
Yeah, yeah, I checked on that today.
Any questions for me? Thank you. On behalf of the village board, I would like to wish a happy retirement, after many years of service, to the residents of the village, to Donna Barkum. It was a well-earned retirement, knowing Donna, she will find a way, she'll find a whole new world of things to do to keep herself busy. Enjoy your retirement, Donna, and thanks for all you've done. It is with pleasure that I introduce Mary Spring Sousa as our new deputy clerk. Born and raised in the village, we look forward to a long and productive relationship with Mary working here in the village. Welcome. The Village Fest was held on August seventeenth, was very successful, were a very successful event for the village residents and visitors, who were here to enjoy a very busy day in the village. Without our generous sponsors and participants, this day of celebration would not have been possible. I would like to thank those sponsors who helped make this day a success. As always, Stewarts and Rouse's Point for their generous donation of ice cream, the treat of the day. I would also like to thank Valero's, Papa John's, Dunkin' Donuts for their generous contributions, Kenny Drugs, Price Chopper for their generosity. I would also like to thank the participants for supplying music and displays for all to enjoy, Border Patrol, Homeland Security, for the helicopter, other equipment that they displayed, Champlain Fire District and EMS for their participation, and of course, Jim Tatro, the music man, and his wife providing music for the enjoyment of all. I'd like to thank trustee McFedrich for running the fun run early in the morning, it was a very successful event. Thank you all for helping to provide wonderful tanks to the residents of the village of Champlain. Thanks to Donna going through the old files where she, where she came across the paperwork dated November sixth, nineteen ninety-five, with an order from New York State Department of Transportation, creating a thirty mile an hour zone for Route eleven to Elm Street to the village limits, which should still be in effect. Kind of a surprise find there. We still need volunteers for the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals. Any village resident who is interested, please call the village office for information, especially alternates for each board, and I believe you have some information. I would like to, I would like to call an executive session to discuss personnel matters when we get to new business this evening. That's all I have. Trustee Trombley?
I really don't have anything to report on this evening, but welcome, Mary, to, to our happy little family.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mary, also. The five K run slash walk was very successful, we had a great turnout, making lots of compliments on our, our course and our beautiful little village, and thanks to all of you who are coming out, of course, I appreciate that, no expense or anything. I attended the zoning board meeting on August fourteenth, where the zoning board of appeals was giving their input on local law number one. I also just want to mention that we do have an option to appoint alternates to the boards, and I, it, it seems that there's often a conflict of interest resulting in the need for someone to recuse themselves, because we're sort of small in this village, it's very likely that an issue's going to be near you. So, I know we've talked a little bit, I know it's hard to come up with people who are willing to serve, but if we could get people, I think we should consider one or two alternates for the Z B A, I think it would, it would be helpful. The two boys that came tonight are student council members, as they introduced themselves, and I know the student council is very interested in working closely with the villages, particularly with Champlain, because we tell them we're so friendly and easy to work with. So, if, and if you've got any community projects to suggest to them, or any community members have any ideas, please let me know. The run for Ashley, which is in memory of Ashley Quasant, has been postponed until May, we just haven't had enough time to plan it, and her mother asked that we postpone it until May, and tried to do it on her birthday. And the only other thing is that we attended that town board meeting, talking about the shit water, and more.
We're at the Bankland's conference tomorrow, see if we can get some clarification on Bankland, the zoning board, and who and when and where should recuse themselves.
Yeah, it seems a little fuzzy.
Get some clarification there, hopefully. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a lot, but I do want to extend my congratulations to Donna Barkum, I wish her very well on her retirement, and I hope she has many years of happiness and great health. And welcome, Mary, congratulations to you as well, I'm glad to have you. And Mike, I understand you guys have been going through quite a chore there, so, yeah, thank you to you and the group, you guys are working hard on that project, it's turned out to be much bigger than we expected, isn't it?
Is there a house?
Yeah?
Just a lot more.
Yeah.
Stop!
But no, I, I know you guys are, you're really diligent trying to get that done, you're doing a great job, thank you. That's all I have.
So, ditto the welcoming, and ditto the congratulations to Donna, I'm jealous, and that's great, I hope you really enjoy your retirement. Also, thank you to everybody, especially you, Greg, for all the extra hours you put in for the Village Fest, it was really kind of exciting, I think that we had more people in the village on that one day than in the twenty years I've lived here, and it was kind of cool to see so many people coming through our village, and people were happy and stopping and talking, and, oh, what's going on here, and, so it's really, really neat to see, and I think we've started something good by working together with Champlain Telephone at the same time, and the yard sale, the combination, I think, is great, just bringing awareness to our, our beautiful community. We may not be visually the most appealing little village, but our hearts are very big and strong, and we have a great sense of community here, I mean, we really do, people are just extremely friendly, and it really is a great place to live, so, thank you to all those who participated in that. Playground still, we're hoping to move forward here, we're just settling out some issues down at the sewer plant, so once that's resolved, we'll have a date, and that's great, the kids are willing to jump on board, so, it'll be probably a very short notice once we get a date, and we'll just make phone and hopefully have enough time to get an article in the newspaper to get the word out, because I know lots of people in the community want to come out and help for that event, and we can kind of make it a Village Fest Part Two event. Hopefully before the snow flies.
Hopefully next two weeks, we're going to start.
Yeah, and I would really like us to think about making it completely handicap accessible, so that would really put us on the map for parks available to folks in wheelchairs, and that will require us just to have an eighteen inch opening, instead of keeping everything closed in like it is now at Champlain Elementary and at Saint Mary's, and just so, it has to be available for a wheelchair to enter in, so they can get onto the swings or any of the other equipment from their chair. So it'd be really nice, since we've got the park with the handicap accessible, ramp, the, the, picnic tables, et cetera, so we want to keep that theme going as we...
Shouldn't be a problem, we do have birds, but instead of, we didn't go right up.
Exactly, and so we're eliminating that other component, so that would be great, and then what we would do is have North Country Center for Independence come up and validate us as a handicap accessible park, and that will be presented in brochures that are given out when people request for parks and places that are handicap accessible, that would be really great, to put that little notch in our cap, so. And then if we get the frisbee golf, that's another plus, to be handicap accessible.
In October, I'll go to the Clinton County Legislature and pitch that one.
Yeah, let me know, be there with you?
We have people from the town of Plattsburgh that's willing to notice as well.
From the Caneville place?
Yep, and they are handicap accessible, so.
Yes, they are.
Anything else?
Well, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, thank you all. For the presentation, for the report from the first treasurer, please.
Everyone has their expense revenue reports for August, I know there's a couple of counts that are in the negative, but we'll do those like half a year to transsume them.
Questions for one unit?
I am assuming this direct energy business, electricity of three thousand two hundred eighty-four dollars is because of all the work you're doing down there, or?
What happened was when direct energy first took over for NYSAC, NYSAC Solutions, we didn't, we weren't billed, so we got like two months and one.
Okay, yeah, so it's like, usually fourteen hundred for down there.
Yeah.
Because then there's another eight hundred forty-nine dollars for eight twenty-six for the sewage, so I'm assuming this is a sewage one, or is this everybody, one oh eight? Is that a makeup for all of it?
No. This direct energy bill right here for thirty-two hundred dollars is the energy bill that's going on.
Okay.
Two months, no? Morrisonville Septic, fifty-four hundred dollars.
No, no, that's the next one, down is the electric one, yeah, I know Morrisonville Septic, that's another question.
That's, yes, that's, this is, this is the, this is a usage, New York State Gas and Electric is our, is our supplier.
Correct.
Is our, is our user, and then you get, direct energy is a usage, chargers are your usage.
So for the sewer plant, they charge us eight hundred twenty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents just to say we have electricity?
That's just delivery charge.
It's delivery charge.
Okay. That's pretty high.
Well, it's, yeah, it's part of, it's part of the gun. Is this also too much?
No, that's got to be gas. New York State Electric, New York State Electric and Gas, it charges us our natural gas, and direct energy charges us our electricity.
And we have the natural gas down there?
Yeah.
Yes, that's true.
What runs our natural gas down there?
The furnace on the gas.
There's no furnace on right now. I'd say running eight hundred twenty-six dollar hot water, there's a problem. And while she's looking at that, this question is to you, Mike, is the Morrisonville Septic, I understand all that extra, I thought we were doing things in trade, is that out the window now?
I don't think that much, like they do want to do...
Okay, so the trade is completely off the table, and this is the actual bill, because I don't want to then have trade and...
That's the actual bill, they're not hauling like they were, because they were hauling before from Pfizer.
Right.
And since they're big box, we're not taking, they're not taking any water from Pfizer, so they're not coming, you know, half doesn't like to leave.
Okay.
So that's where that went out. That was originally the plan, anticipated plan, we're going to take it off the hauling. But now they have, they don't have anything else on them now. I don't know what they're doing with it. Do they do anything with it or?
$452.61 says neither data service change. And what service change do we do?
Change from NICIC to direct?
We were NICIC Solutions before this. But there's no charge to do your change over?
No, it's okay.
But the other one through direct energy is, is our?
Is two months worth.
Is our, our electricity charge. Okay. And then the 3J fuels, Vacha 130, it just says various invoices. Wasn't that big?
That's, that's been trucking this lunch, haul it to.
That's just to haul it. It's lost $4,600 to dump it, or $5,400, or whatever the dumpage, well, that was.
Yes, that's, that's the $400.
This is really run way over what we projected.
We got two beds full right now, actually more than that. We took out other tanks.
We're still within budget, are we?
We are?
We have $20,000 budget.
But is it just seeming so high right now, Mike, because it hasn't been?
It's been, it's been, it's been, it's never been empty.
So after this, then, it's going to even out and?
It should. Right now, we've got beds that are pretty full. Everything we took out, we emptied four tanks so far. And what we hauled out was last year's.
Because it wasn't done?
Because usually in the fall, they haul it. We had to haul it out to make room to put what we took out of the tanks. And took out the tanks into the drying beds. So what we got there is setting and re-watering. Once we get it down enough, we can start to mix it to try to get it dry. And then we'll pile it and next year we'll be hauling. Next year, we'll be hauling out, we'll probably have more than we haul this year because we had so much extra from the tanks, never being emptied. The tanks were three-foot deep and solid. It's been sitting there for, we had to get it out to change, to change the diffusers. So we really didn't have a choice.
The diffusers could not have been very efficient if you had them much.
Well, and most of them were leaking.
That'd be very poor operation.
Well, so we should see everything go down. Electric, all that good stuff.
I don't know if you see electric go down that much because your blowers are still running. It's going to take less air, it'll be easier on the blowers. But your blowers are still running because of the ebb draw. We will know once we get a little further here, but it's hard to say. You'll break it down quicker, so you'll get rid of it.
But I know what Amy's saying, once you've got this into a really good cycle, things are going to kind of even out.
Right. I mean, I can't guarantee electricity's going to go down just because the blowers are running at a steady, they're not a variable blower where they take, they're running at a steady rate. And if it's, they're running 24/7, you're going to have, electricity's still going to be there if they're running at a steady home load.
It's just going to make the process.
It will, it will be, yes.
More efficient.
Yes, the process. So the savings would naturally.
That was my only question system.
Motion to approve the work?
Oh, we have extra invoices to be added in the amount of $4,208.56.
Can I just ask you a silly question? What's the additional NICIC? Why is this, why did this one come later?
Because these are for lighting districts.
Okay, thank you. Any come in a separate time?
That's correct.
Thank you. Wish we just get one bill.
Were the sample numbers related to the roof project for all, or?
No. The first one, I think, was the soundproofs for the playground. Second one was the drainage building boxes for drainage on Elm Street.
Let me know if you have any playground expenses because we may be able to get things donated.
These are.
Okay.
And we will, we will have, we will change seats.
Well, yeah, so a lot of little, that kind of a.
I don't know. I want to talk to you about that. I think those is program, playground program. And we'll be able to contact.
Other contact there.
Motion to approve the work?
So who, with the additional $42.85?
Any other discussion on the work?
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Any other discussion on the work? Roll call, please.
Trustee Trembling.
Aye.
Trustee Newt Futch.
Aye.
Trustee Trembling.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
Report from the superintendent?
We have our regular general, you know, mowing, trimming, brush cutting we've been doing. Which, you know, we hauled up, I think we hauled, tractor trailer, the sludge in the drying beds, that's complete. We have three, we emptied three of the Areshian tanks in one digester. And changed diaphragm, the diffusers and all those on one side. This week, we have another digester, the second digester's empty. I'm planning on the Wednesday, change again, change all the diffusers and that. Then we'll have three tanks left to do. While we had them down, some piping between the tanks, we took care of, we painted this bare metal. We had a D and C inspection, went well, wastewater plant, our hanging inspection. We removed all the stuff from the St. Mary's playground, disassembled, took it all out. Did a couple days with the jackhammer and cement. Now got it all painted, the pipes and whatnot. We just need to make a little time here to start installing, get it back in the ground here so the kids can start using it. Right now, we're in the process of, well, we have sewer plant and putting drainage on Elm Street by the Harris Building. Drainage, there was not very much drainage here, water's running across the road. So we're in the process right now of putting a few new drains, a new piping through there. There were some drains that came from, from a shop that, new piping was installed and whatever hooked up, deadheaded from the shop that came out of the street. So the water was just bubbling out of the ground. So they are now hooked up, you could hear that. They installed our new shingles on this roof here. The next, probably this week, here toward the end of the week, I should see the tin come in. I believe next week is going to start in the back roof. I've got a second quote for our chimney repair, which is attached to the, like the superintendent's report. And we had had one last time for $2,825, $2,800 and?
Twenty, twenty-five.
Yep. And the other one we had is for actually $2,850. It's the same fellow that did our two roofs. So for $25 difference, we're probably better to stick with this fellow doing both roofs and the chimney in the way it's all the same.
Well, tell him, take the $25 off, we'll give him the end of business.
It's just, if you have, if you have a leak, or 25, you have 25 bucks if you have a leak itself, he's doing both roofs and chimneys. So I mean, it's up to you guys which one to do. He's $25 more than, actually, I'm sure if I call him, he'll match it. I thought the other one was $2875. And I called him, he said, well, make it $2850. But I didn't realize it was $2825. I'm not sure if I called him, he'll not surprise. So it's up to you guys what you want to do. If he will match it, if you want to stay with him, he'll be the one that did both roofs and the chimney. So if there's any other issues, it's not too separate.
So did you look into?
I asked, I asked for B-VET as well. They said it'd be more expensive to go that way by the time you tear down the chimney to put it up than it would be to fix this one and put a stainless steel liner in it.
Mike?
Yes?
I see on the second.
Sid 200.
Quote, well, what kind of, I mean, the first quote is very detailed as to exactly what they're going to do. And his quote is not. You know, it just says block bond and then a less, less generic quoting.
What it, what these are, this chimney here is not, it's not a solid block. What they are is, they are smaller blocks because the flue's bigger. So you have to change the block on the outside of the chimney and then they're going to coat it.
Okay, so is he, is he going to do the same kind of?
Yes, and I will make sure that, I mean, we don't have to, you don't have to say tonight with which one you want to go with, but long as it's the same apples to apples, then.
Yes, that's what I'm getting at. Is it, you know, is it going to be comparable?
Right.
Because this is pretty generic.
It says tear down chimney to flashing, rebuild chimney with block.
Yeah.
Yeah, the others.
Because they're coming down to the roof.
Material and labor to repair existing chimney to repair.
The blocks have to be changed. They have to be changed. There's solid block on the outside.
Right.
But I'll make sure if you want me to, and what I'll do is have them give us a more detailed description.
I would like that.
That'd be good.
Sure.
Thanks.
Yep. But I did ask both, both actually of these guys to give me a price on changing the metal vestas or B-VET, because gassy means B-VET. And they both told me that it would be more expensive by the time you tear this chimney down, put B-VET in than it would be to repair. Because the bottom section from the roof line down is good. It's the top section that sticks out is bad. And it's the acidity from the natural gas that eat it. And it's, you could fix it now if you don't put a liner in it, you're going to be right back in the same position.
Definitely, but you'll get a.
I will get a detailed quote before.
So he's tearing it off from the roof line up?
Yeah, from the chimney.
And rebuilding it new with the new flue and new blocks?
Well, I don't, the flue is all right. It's just the outside block is deteriorated, the center block. And I will make sure that before we make any decisions.
I would just, I would just like to see more detail that we're not surprised when he, you know, something happens.
Yeah, if you don't want to just put block bond on there and say it's good.
Yeah, exactly.
That's what it looks like with this.
Thank you.
And I also want to welcome Mary aboard and look forward to working with her and wish Donna well in her retirement.
Any questions?
Are you doing anything further with the edging on Chestnut Street?
What do you mean, edging?
Well, you know how you poured the gravel and then threw the dirt on? And I thought you said you were coming back to seed it. So I assumed it was going to happen in the fall.
We were, we are.
Because I noticed I got these three-foot tall weeds growing.
That's like flowers.
They're burning.
No, we, we didn't see.
So I didn't know whether I should proceed and do something or if something's coming.
We did put a leg going to seed, but it was so dry that some of it didn't take. So as it gets a little cooler here, we don't have as much heat, we will reseed.
Before I do that, I wanted to check.
I mean, you're welcome to, but, no, we will go back through, once it's, now it's getting a little cooler, but it was right after we did, it was such a dry spell that nothing, we didn't have to walk, try to water every day, it's almost impossible.
Well, because especially that one angle, you know, in front of the main part of the house, it was so, it's so drastic, it still is. It's very difficult with the mower and with all that rock and dirt. It's dangerous to mower right now, so it's like.
Right now, is there rock showing through?
Oh, yeah, little rocks, yeah, oh, yeah. It's just totally.
I'll check. I gotta do several sidewalk across the street from there too. It's really dry, we put cones above.
Well, the kids ride that all the time.
The sewer line, I think, goes right there. So I don't know. We'll either have to, of course, not section for how we deal with it's really need. We will reseed. If you know pretty much, we probably will be able to, a little bit lighter.
Correspondents, please.
Letter to Ken Delfran regarding deadline to complete demolition of his burned house on 29 Cedar Street. Correspondence from Sumter Bill Owens regarding invitation to Medea Moore's plaque dedication. Notice violation to say, there are properties for uncut grass at 36 Pine Street. Notice violation to Ronald Donahue for junk vehicles at 18 Water Street. Correspondence from Ken Delfran regarding his property at 29 Cedar Street. Letter to Ken Delfran regarding asbestos survey for his property at 29 Cedar Street. JCO monthly report.
Comments on the correspondence?
Yeah, JCO has a sign up. They're looking for volunteers to help transport seniors to appointments. So if people are interested in helping out, please give JCO a call.
Did you get any volunteers from folks? Or you're looking for volunteers?
Oh, for my, for the Young Bloodsman? No. So just get the word out about the program and.
Very good. All right, we have no whole business, new business. Consider Beverly Kennedy Sewer Credit with the new, with the.
Policy.
The new water policy, wastewater credits. This is previously denied. To go back to January 2012. Yes, I'd like a motion.
I make a motion to approve the wastewater credit.
Sewer credit. Yeah.
Yeah.
For. Water.
Sewer credit, wastewater credit. It looks like for $102. And that is from the original request dated October 31st, 2012.
I'll second that. Sorry, Amy.
No, you got it, Carol.
Any discussion?
This was, we said we'd go back to January, this is the one I found that meets our criteria.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We need to change October and November board meetings.
Why do they have to be changed?
Fourth is this Columbus Day and the 11th is Veterans Day.
So when you change them, do you keep them on Mondays?
We can have them on any day.
Usually, usually we do it on a week. 7th is good for me and October.
7th is good for me. Could be fun, I think.
Okay. October's meeting will be the 7th? November?
Same thing with 4th.
The 4th okay with everybody?
Eve of election, anybody running for anything, you want to be out campaigning?
Yeah, I think that's fun, too.
It's fun with me.
A motion changing those two dates, please.
So both?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Carries. You've been copied with the local law final number one. Mr. Marshall has revised as per the suggestions from the, part of the suggestions from the zoning board, Board of Appeals. The changes, if you go down the column to where it says animal and common household pets, that's quite an ambitious line there. But it is the second, it is the second sentence there. Common household pets are dogs, cats, gerbils, hamsters, guinea pigs, birds, reptiles, and fish provided they are kept inside the owner's house at night.
What about fish ponds?
No, we don't have any fish pond.
Well, no, it's, it's true. Well, when they have those big fish ponds, they are their pets, they're, I mean, I don't know of anyone currently at this moment, but I remember Tatos had a beautiful one and they made a big, it was gorgeous. I don't pay attention, that just came to my head, fish and bring them in at night. And I'm thinking, oh, no.
Got to consider the other side.
Yeah.
On the second page, uh, we'll come back to it. The top definition shall not, uh, let's see. Common household pets, all is defined here and above. One nineteen to sixteen definitions shall not be permitted in the village limits. Domesticated animals and domesticated fowl are not defined as common household pets. Shall only be allowed within the village for, or after applying for and obtaining a use variance approval from the village zoning board. The village zoning board shall only grant such use variance after consideration and application of all required criteria and consideration of the effects on surrounding neighbors and property. And I believe... The rest of their, uh... Has been determined.
So are we not having the grand public saws?
No.
So anybody now currently that's in the village, woman has to apply?
Yes. For anything other than what's defined here. Do you know, you sent this back for revision and including...
Well, it's just that we need to describe animals and common household pets.
Now, fish pond would not be a common household.
Right. But you can't bring them in at night.
Know what they mean to definition here of a common household pet, such as dogs, cats, and gerbils. They would fit under the variance clause perhaps.
So if someone doesn't bring their dog or cats in at night, they're outdoor animals, they're, they're not... I, I don't mean to be throwing monkey wrenches in, dark people start bringing their dogs or their cats, they're outdoor animals.
It's the at night, really, that's the issue here.
Yeah, that's, what was the zoning board's, what was the thought?
Mr. Visconti was the one who finally came up with, with that sentence, I believe.
Yes.
Because I thought of that too, when I, when I read it, it was like, you know, there may be some people that actually give their dog out and pet at night.
Well, there are people that'll bring their pig in, because it's a pet pig. I know it sounds silly, but, I mean, you had a kid at Saint Mary's, they had a pet pig, he came in at night.
It's something to stay in all day too.
They really aren't, okay, no, I'm sorry. Um, I don't know, I, that just...
How would you like to see this changed? We have the vote to revise it, as per the village board.
If you took out the, the at night requirement, would it...
Uh, yeah, I would take out the at night. I mean, these are, animals that are common household pets are...
Fisher slots, I know.
Fowls, birds, hogs, cows, horses, goats, sheep, bananas.
That would have to be one that comes in, uh, of every age.
Yeah, if, if somebody wanted to put it...
Right, for a, a fish pond.
Yes, if they wanted to put in a fish pond, they would have to come before the zoning board and apply for an application.
They'd have to apply for a use variance, but if they apply the test for the use variance, I don't see them getting any, any variance for it. You have to prove a financial hardship. How are you gonna prove a financial hardship if you own a fish pond?
Well, well, and I'm going along on the premise of if somebody wants to put in a pool, right? And you, and I remember this from a previous meeting, didn't they have to get a permit or something?
A building for, for a pool.
Okay.
I'm talking about zoning pool.
Not a special use. Right.
Right.
Okay.
Right. But what he's alluding to here is you have to apply for a use variance for anything that would not normally be allowed. Use variances are typically the hardest variances to get because of the tests that you have to meet. Their biggest one, you know, the form, the character, the neighborhood, the unique, uh... The hardest one I, I would imagine would be proving a financial hardship. In other words, you can't use your property for anything else to make money, other than to put a fish pond, to use that example.
We don't want that situation. You buy a couple of goldfish and throw in your pond.
That would fit under the, I believe would fit under the kennels and, um...
Yeah, kennels and animal hospitals, you would use a use variance to justify that if you could.
I'm trying to figure what he was going with, just to say, provided they are properly restrained accordingly. I don't know where he was going with keeping them in at night.
That was a suggestion.
They classify it as a pet.
That was his suggestion.
Is it just, so...
Yeah, I realized that.
Yeah, that's different, that, that was a different, that's not on this though. That's not been incorporated into this.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what the, that's what that wording is.
Can someone, is that a section right here?
Yeah, I know that, but I thought he was talking about the leash thing at the, that was at the end of the zoning board.
That was, that was...
Oh, okay.
No, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how to, where he was going with the...
At night?
Yeah, having to keep them in the house at night.
Was that, was he just trying to make...
I think we should just take that sentence out, and fish, period.
I don't wanna paint ourselves in a corner.
Provided they're kept inside the owner's house at night.
Careful.
Right, because there are a bunch of people in our village that do not bring their dogs in at night.
But, but they're kept tied or in pen.
They don't.
Well, I don't like that.
No, they're not kept tied or in pen, you know that.
Well, they should be kept tied.
Yeah, they should be, but we do know that there are a few that aren't.
Yes, that's what lease laws are about.
Right, they are kept inside the owner's house. Or restrained on property.
Restrained accordingly, that's where I always had it, that it was stated.
Fish that are restrained accordingly.
Well, those are...
They are restrained in the pond.
Containment.
Those are the ones that's in the fish bowl.
Contained, maybe there's a better word. No, no, that would just contain.
Those...
I mean, I see the difference between fish here and fish ponds.
Right.
You got some goldfish in a bowl.
Turning it in a corner, right, then you've got that outdoor pond, which actually does enhance the property. I mean, it makes them look quite lovely, with the little fountains and...
Right, they are kept accordingly.
What's your recommendation?
I say we take out the kept in at night. I think that we open ourselves up to debate of people saying, well, you know, Jimmy Jones doesn't keep his dog in at night, so it's not a pet, so it's gotta go. And those of us listening to that dog bark all night would be glad to see that dog go.
Well, you can't just take out at night though, because then it ends with they are kept inside the owner's house.
Common household pets are dogs, cats, gerbils, hamsters, guinea pigs, birds, reptiles, and fish. That's it.
And just stop?
Stop!
Yeah.
Those are common household pets.
I used to have a neighbor that had, that kept a dog out, a doghouse at night, and she had a light, and the light burnt out. She'd cry, and I'd walk across the street from the light.
She howled, I mean, howled.
But that was, it's just an example I think of, it's like, not everybody, you know, actually keeps dogs in their house all the time, so... I do, I believe you should.
I'd like to find a farm for mine.
So the board's recommendation is to stop at the word fish?
Yes.
That is my recommendation.
Is everyone comfortable with that?
Yeah, I agree with it.
I can make a motion that we remove, provided they are kept inside the owner's house at night.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next team. I'd like a resolution to appoint Chad Deans and Keith Federer to the zoning board.
So?
Have a second?
Second.
Both of these individuals have expressed some desire to, uh, be members of the board. I think it will, uh, no, excuse me. This is for the planning board, not zoning, planning.
So I forget it. I remove my motion.
All right.
Let's put them on the other one. I make a motion, put them on the planning board.
And we still have a second?
Second.
We still have a second. Okay. Uh, as I was saying, both have expressed some desire to be on this board, which is typical.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I need a motion to, uh, for Juanita to attend a seminar on health insurance, the new health insurance laws that are coming down the road on September eighteenth from eight to ten in the morning. This is put on by the North Country Chamber of Commerce, New York Benefits Alliance. Title is, what you need to know about changes in health insurance.
Make a motion.
For the cost of ten dollars. Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? I think this is going to hand information that we all need to know here very quickly. Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, need board approval for Mike Dolicker and I to attend a water meter seminar in Malta on September twenty-fourth. This is a, uh, this is a free... This is a free, uh, meeting dealing with census water meters, which, uh, as this project moves forward, census is going to be the water meter that we will be installing throughout the village.
Where's Malta? Is the search over?
Yes.
Oh, that's very...
Okay, and this is at no, well...
It's at twelve.
Mike's, Mike's salary for the day, but I will drive, so it's not gonna cost anything to get there and back. The motion?
So...
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I need approval for Mike Dolicker to attend Cornell Roads Program in Malone, October eighth, uh, dealing with stormwater management. We seem to have a huge issue here with, uh, how we handle our stormwater. In fact, that's what he's doing on Elm Street for the last week or so, is, uh, is dealing with that. I think this would be beneficial for Mike to attend. This is put on by the Cornell Local Roads Program. And a variety of it, the one that we, uh, the one that we look at, this is at the Emergency Services Building. Need a motion to approve?
Some of them.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion on this?
Should I tell Tom?
Yeah, just...
Fifty dollars.
It's just one day.
One day. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The last thing on my agenda here is the approval to replace the chimney, but we put that out till October? Yes?
Well, why don't we approve the expenditure of up to, so he can move ahead with this? You know, so up to the twenty-nine hundred dollars.
Oh, I, I thought it was, is it twenty-eight fifty?
It is, but...
It is, but depending, wanna make sure it's apples to apples, that's...
Right.
The blocks are changing up.
Okay, so it's...
Right.
You're looking for approval for, to spend up to twenty-nine hundred dollars to fix this chimney?
Provided that it's apples to apples with the other quote.
Oh, yeah, right.
And we're gonna let Mike decide that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Need a motion now?
Some of them.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? This one will take a roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee McFetrich?
Aye.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee McGarrett?
Garrett.
McGarrett, yes, here, aye. Mayor Martin?
Aye.
I'd like a motion to go into executive session to discuss some personnel issues.
Some of them.
Have a second?
Second.
We are in executive session, and we'll be right back. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to come back into the regular session?
Some of them.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. One decision was made in the executive session, it is on the personnel policy. Uh, I have page ten, I think it's page nine, yours, any updated? That the, for the time being, that the contribution for health insurance will remain at ten percent for the non-union employees. Pending a look at the next, uh, at the next, uh, approval in April of the two thousand and fourteen personnel policy, we'll have a better understanding of what the new healthcare, the new healthcare, uh, system, which is taking effect soon. We'll have a better idea of that, and we can make our adjustments at that point. Is there any other new business to come before the board? Need a motion to adjourn?
Some of them.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?